Ask for a roll call.
Jacobson, Fanouken, Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. We do have a forum. Alderman Fanouken is in the building and I haven't heard from Alderman Jacobson so I'll expect he'll be joining us in progress. Let me ask Officer Gazinski to join us and come forward, lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
I'd like to lead us to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markort.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to special items, our first item under proudly DeKalb, we have the bicycle friendly community application overview by Live Healthy DeKalb County. I'll turn to Cindy Kapek.
Hi, I'm Cindy Kapek representing Live Healthy DeKalb County.
And I'm Jessica Hank representing the city in the DeKalb-Sycamore area transportation study.
Thank you.
I sound pretty big representing a whole county, don't I? Just a little bit about Live Healthy DeKalb County. The county, Live Healthy Initiative started in 2012 and we had two initiatives. One was to create a more walkable, bikeable community and the other was to increase the awareness and number of healthy food opportunities, food and beverage opportunities. But I'm really here to talk about the active transportation part of it. Our group has been meeting monthly. We are a group of volunteers in the community who strongly support an active transportation movement. Some of the things that we've done over the past four years is, one, focus on education about the importance of biking and walking in our communities for our overall health and well-being. Advocacy, whenever there's issues that are coming up relative to transportation planning, trails and paths, trying to be an advocate to make sure that those things are paid attention to in our community. Trail development and also creating relationships, just like the relationship that we now have with DSATs and the city of DeKalb. And we've had several successes that we're very, very proud of. One is we were able to secure some grant funding and if you've seen the green bike signs throughout DeKalb and Sycamore and some of the kiosks on the trails, that's a result of our efforts in getting grant funding for that. A very, very small link, but a very, very important link that took us several years to make happen and the city was a participant in that and funding some of that link along with several other partners was the small piece of sidewalk in front of the Y. And that was a critical piece because it connected the trail to the north and then connected the trail up Bethany Road to get to the Peace Road Trail. And it was also critical because of safety issues of kids and families and everyone else walking on the street. We also have supported Bike to Work Day throughout the community by advertising that event and offering rewards for employees who are engaged in that, even the employees who rode their bikes in May when it was snowing. And we've developed educational programs at the school and hosted several community rides both in DeKalb and Sycamore to create an awareness of if you're on a bike or you're walking, some of the connectivity issues that you might have to address as an individual. We have several of our partners here today to support kind of our request as we move forward with this bike-friendly initiative, so I'd like them to stand. We have the Kishwaki Y, we have the Kish Health System, City of DeKalb, the DeKalb Police Department, DSATs, the Kish Bike and Rec Club, North Central Cyclory and community members as well, so if you would stand up. These are people who have dedicated a lot of time, effort and energy to try to make our community healthy for everyone, so thank you to them. So, so much about Live Healthy DeKalb County and why are we really here? We're really here to talk about becoming bike-friendly. And the Bike Friendly Program is a program of the League of the American Bicyclists and they started in 1880 and their first wins were paved roads. So, it was important, as opposed to have a method for people to get around on. And their goal really is to make biking better for everyone. They listen, they learn, they provide standards, they share best practices and engage diverse communities to kind of build a powerful voice for biking. And the league is very active, both state and nationally, in some of the legal kinds of things and pushing transportation bills and that forward to help fund biking initiatives in our communities. The Bike Friendly Program is a key part of this program. It is a very positive tool, it's not a negative tool. It's kind of like a roadmap of how do you get to be a bike-friendly community? And it works with communities, businesses and universities. The city can become bike-friendly, Northern Illinois can become a bike-friendly community as well as individual businesses, but we're starting here because we think the city has the best chance to be bike-friendly. It provides different methods for taking action in different areas and there are free online applications, libraries and assistance that they'll provide staff. So, what do you do? They have a fairly lengthy application process. It's free, that's a good thing. And you fill out this application and kind of rate yourself in a number of areas. It's not, it's not easy, it's not hard, but it really takes some time, effort and some digging deep to see about the things that you're doing now and possibly doing in the future. You can win four different levels, bronze, silver, gold and platinum. I and several other members of Live Healthy visited our closest partner who has a bronze award and that is Batavia. And we spent about two hours going through the application process, talking about the things that the city of DeKalb has done regarding bike-friendly and they felt like it was a no-brainer, we can get it. And we said, okay, if you say so, we're gonna do it, or at least we're gonna try to do it, because they talked about their initiatives and we said, we think we're a little bit a step ahead of you, even though they may have a little fewer, more mouths of bike trails, but we had other things in place. So, what we're gonna do where we're proposing, I'm jumping the gun or asking you to support, is for us, to allow us to submit the application because it is free and it doesn't really require any commitment of funding on your part, it just is a support for moving forward with this initiative. What it does is it's a study on how we can make our community safer for biking, it'll give us some policies and best practices that we can look at, it'll give us toolkits, it'll give us some ideas for additional educational opportunities and hopefully provide a safer community for all of us. So, it's just a wonderful program and we think a roadmap to making our community more bike-friendly, more walk-friendly for everyone by going through this process. And I think I turn it over to you, right? Okay, Jessica.
Thank you Cindy. So, as Cindy mentioned, the application is free and it asks about a series of a dozen questions in each of five major categories of bicycle policy and programs. The application provides a menu of options for any community to better welcome and accommodate bicycling and it's really adaptable to each community. To reach the higher levels of a BFC designation, communities must score well across all five areas. These areas include engineering, so the physical infrastructure, education, the programs that ensure the safety, comfort and convenience of cyclists and fellow road users, encouragement, which includes incentives, promotions and opportunities that inspire and enable people to ride, enforcement, which includes equitable laws and programs that ensure motorists and cyclists are held accountable, and evaluation, which includes the processes that demonstrate a commitment to measuring results and planning for the future. Based on these criteria, the league has a community scoring application and awards credit in the following categories. Platinum communities usually show excellence across the board, these communities have comfortable and safe bike, a comfortable and safe bike network and just about everybody is bicycling everywhere. And gold communities, they have a strong bike culture as well, but maybe need to complete their bike network a little bit more and maybe have a few more safe routes to school programs. Silver communities are somewhat welcoming to bikes and are easy to navigate for intermediate and experienced cyclists. While bronze communities might not necessarily feel bike-friendly yet, these communities only have a few bike lanes and motorists may not yet be aware they need to share the road. Illinois has 12 BFCs with the award of bronze status or better. Based on the size of DeKalb and the awardees with similar bicycle policy and program criteria as the city already has, we feel as though the city would fall into the bronze award category. Over and over, we hear how useful the program is for coordination, benchmarking and giving the deserved recognition to all people in the community who are building a great bicycle-friendly community. It's important to say that this is not a special interest. Creating more opportunities for bicycling is a simple solution to many challenges of the city, from improving personal and environmental health to building a vibrant and robust economy. Bicycle-friendly communities always top the lists of the best places to live, work, visit, retire and study in Forbes and Newsweek and in international rankings of city quality of life. In addition, these cities have been recognized for their economic sustainability through the recession. In Business Week's Top 20 Cities to Ride Out the Recession, 17 of those are BFC communities. However, bicycling is more than a practical, cost-effective solution to several municipal challenges. It's an opportunity to make the community a vibrant destination for residents and visitors, a place where people don't just live and work, but where they thrive. And a big part of that high quality of life comes from with making bicycling an easier, safer and more comfortable option for people to get where they want to go or recreate by bike. The city clearly already knows this, the proof is in how closely the bicycle-friendly community designation aligns with each vision of the DeKalb 2025 strategic plan. For example, the vision of a sense of place, goal two, is support placemaking in DeKalb's neighborhoods downtown at entrance gateways, the airport and on campus. The designation and award plaques that the city would receive would be a visual representation that DeKalb supports bicycling and initiatives that create bicycle-friendly places. The vision of community vitality and a vibrant downtown goal four is enhance the value, appearance and vitality of the city's neighborhoods. The BFC award can have economic benefits for new businesses and residents enticed by the family-friendly quality of the community to bike to school and work in public places like libraries and shopping. Bicycle infrastructure is shown to increase property values and draw in new residents and visitors. The vision of inclusiveness, goal two, is promote inclusiveness throughout the community. A higher percentage of people bike to work in DeKalb compared to other communities of similar size. Supporting the BFC application shows support for people who use alternate forms of transportation to get to where they're going. The vision of accessibility, goal one, is expand the availability of safe, secure, affordable, accessible and timely transportation options within DeKalb. Having a BFC award increases grant funding opportunities as it proves the community is committed to carry through with bicycle infrastructure improvements and safety programs. And finally, the vision of efficient, quality responsive services, goal two B, is engage in thoughtful planning to address long-term city needs. Completing and submitting an application is a valuable tool as the community is provided with a written narrative from the League of American Bicyclists on how to improve bicycling with the community. It's something that they write up and prepare for us. Not only does the BFC designation align with the DeKalb 2025 strategic plan, but it also aligns with the Live Healthy Active Transportation Initiative. Recently, the members of Live Healthy Active Transportation Initiative have met and we held a strategic planning meeting to narrow the focus of our work for the upcoming year. Overwhelmingly, members selected the BFC application as a top focus and Cindy's already mentioned some of the things that we've been doing as far as getting ready for this application. But we can't do it without your support. While city staff and Live Healthy DeKalb County Active Transportation members believe the city has met the criteria to be awarded the bronze BFC designation, the city can do more now to further support its application while also meeting goals set in the DeKalb 2025 strategic plan. These initiatives include grant funding for bicycle infrastructure, which meets the strategic plan vision of efficient, quality responsive services. And one of those goals identified is identify a list of unmet needs and their costs and collaborate with potential public and private sector sponsors to meet those needs. Another initiative is the development of educational materials and programs on bicycle safety and road sharing. And that meets a vision of the community vitality and a vibrant downtown goal, which would like encouragement of community-based public safety engagement strategies and practices. It also, another initiative is the adoption of a City of DeKalb Complete Streets policy which meets the strategic plan vision of community vitality and a vibrant downtown goal, which specifically states implementation of a complete streets policy and future city planning to improve safety, accessibility and aesthetics. And finally, we would be looking for the adoption of ordinances to make bicycling safer and encourage residents to ride, which meets the strategic plan vision of a sense of place to improve the safety and utilization of DeKalb's recreational assets. At this time, Live Healthy DeKalb County and city staff seek support for the application to become a bicycle-friendly community so that we can continue to improve transportation options for all residents. In future, staff will bring the initiatives I just mentioned to council for approval and support of the BFC application and to meet the goals of the DeKalb 2025 strategic plan. With your support, we are confident we can achieve a bicycle-friendly community designation for the city of DeKalb by submitting an application to the League of American Bicyclists by the August 9th deadline. On behalf of Live Healthy DeKalb County, Cindy and myself, thank you for listening about this exciting opportunity.
Okay. Are there questions of either Jessica or Cindy? Alderman Noriko.
I just wanted to thank the Live Healthy Group. Many of you are doing this, I know, out of, you know, a strong love of cycling and desire to live healthy, be wonderful role models for the rest of us who probably don't get quite as many miles in. But seriously, thank you very much for your time and energy and thoughtfulness on this issue. I think this is the kind of project that we would like to encourage, is citizens who feel strongly and passionately about a project and are willing to commit to work on it, so thank you.
On behalf of Live Healthy DeKalb County, thank you. And it really is not just about biking. When you talk about connectivity issues, pathways and sidewalks, it's walking, it's rollerblading, it's bicycling, it's running, it's all about everything. It's really creating what we think is a healthy city of DeKalb. And I have to applaud the staff who have been very, very generous in their time and willingness to work with us to move some of this forward and the city overall for being proactive on an initiative like this, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other questions or discussion? Okay, I'll add my thanks to Live Healthy DeKalb County for the initiative and we'll look forward to further progress toward that application. Moving to human service funding, we have an annual report from Kish Health Hospice, Director Teresa Gobelli.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Teresa Gobelli, as he said. I am the Director of Kish Health System Hospice and thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. You've been supporting Kish Health System Hospice for a number of years and we really appreciate that. Just wanted to give you a few reminders about our program and what we do. In 2015, 70% of the patients that we served were in, they had their residence in DeKalb itself. So, that's a high number that we serve just in this community. We provide comprehensive care for the terminally ill, that's patients that have a prognosis of six months or less and any diagnosis we serve. We have staff available 24 hours, seven days a week, holidays, Easter, we had people working and seeing patients, everything continues no matter what day of the week it is. When we see a patient, we do an admission and we have nurses that make visits, home health aides that make visits to the house and help them with bathing and things like that, social workers, chaplain and music therapy. Recently, we just received our joint commission accreditation, which, that basically holds us to a higher standard of care. It was a lot of work and we did very well on the survey and so we're very pleased to have done that. We serve patients in their homes, in skilled nursing facilities, the nursing homes of the area, assisted livings, any environment that they call home. Some of our patients, we just take care of them wherever they live. Sometimes we have them move out of the area and then we still try to continue to follow them. We do serve nine counties. We don't do a lot on the outsides of those counties, it's more the local area. One of the programs that we have that, you know, is extra, that an agency wouldn't have to have, is our music therapy program. And it may, you may have heard of that before. We have Jen Conley, she's a music therapist, she goes around to see the patients and the families, plays music. If you've seen any of the studies or read anything about patients that have dementia and Alzheimer's and some of those things, when they listen to music, I think there was even a show on 60 Minutes about it, that these patients can sing along and even though they aren't speaking at that time, you know, they don't have any way to verbally communicate with their families. They say after music has played and they've been engaged in some sort of music, they have a window of opportunity where they can understand, which is really, really a neat program. Recently, we had had a gentleman that Jen went to see and she was playing with him and he liked the older hymns, she was playing Amazing Grace and she happened to have taping it that day. I think the family was taping it on the phone to get a little video and he started singing with her and he actually even came in doing harmony. So, he knew that Amazing Grace for many years. Anyway, it was a short time later that he did die, but the family did allow us to show that video. One of our fundraisers and one of the family members, a distant relative, came up and said, gee, I'd really like a copy. They didn't get it from the family and they were very interested. So, she does some amazing things. We have a bereavement coordinator that, our program for bereavement, we follow people 13 months after a patient has died and that's for whatever level of support they're looking for. Some patients just, families just like the mailings that we send, some come to support groups. We support children, we support grandchildren, people of the community, even if they haven't been our patient. The children's group that we have, it's called First Friday Friends, which is unique to this area. I've worked in many hospices and the program that we have here, those children, a lot of them start at a very young age, maybe it was a, we had a few, it's a loss of a father, it could be a grandparent and they come on the first Friday of the month and there's a, oh, they do some snacks, of course, and then they have, you know, like a group lesson and sometimes it's, one year it was on construction and they got the hard hats and they were able to talk about, you know, their feelings and how do they build their feelings and, you know, these memories and the positive things that they can remember. Anyway, the group for the children has just been a really neat group and those children come back and they are followed in this group for many years, some of them all the way up to teen years. And we have had them come back when they get older and want to work with us as a support, a volunteer. Anyway, our average census runs right now around 30, 35, sometimes it hits 40, but we're a relatively small program. The majority of our funding comes from Medicare. As you know, Medicare is pretty stingy with their money. They have a rate that they pay us on a daily basis to provide all the medicines that the patient needs, the durable medical equipment, which would be a bed, oxygen, everything, all of the visit we need to, you know, visits we need to have happen, you know, sending the people out to the homes. And then they subtract 2% for that sequestration that they're trying to recoup some funding. So, but between Medicare and our fundraising and support from people like you and the city, that's what keeps our program going. We take patients on irregardless of their ability to pay. So, if their insurance doesn't cover hospice, if they don't have any insurance, whatever it is, we take all patients. And when we do that, we pay for everything, their medications and whatever is needed. And we provided nearly 8,000 visits to patients' homes last year in all aspects. Some were, you know, music visits or nursing or what have you. So, anyway, that's my synopsis of our hospice program. I don't know if you have questions for me. I don't know if you have questions for me.
Teresa, thank you for the report. I continue to hear positive experiences of families that have interacted with hospice, and I extend compliments to you and the program for that positive reputation. Thank you for those services. Other questions or discussion? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa. The second annual report we have this evening on human service funding will be given by Jerry Wright, the Nguzo Saba Men's Club. Welcome, Jerry.
I had a video, I don't know if it made it to...
Looks like it's coming out.
It's coming? Oh, there it is. Hey, hey, we had a student that volunteered to make us a video, so we want to show it out. We can play it. Clicking Guzo Saba. My name is Jerry Wright. I am one of the founders of Nguzo Saba Men's Club of DeKalb, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the Nguzo Saba Basketball Mentoring Program. The basketball mentoring program started more than 20 years ago with a group of men coming out of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. Our mission at that time was to use basketball as a tool to get young men involved in some community service and give them more positive activities to engage in. And so, we began with the DeKalb Park District, the DeKalb School Board, and the city of DeKalb coming together to fund the program. We started out in ancient gymnasiums in the evenings with high school-age kids. The program has since grown to include middle school, grammar school, and we've even expanded into preschool a couple of years ago. We also have a component that has college-age students and some of the community-aged men playing basketball at the end of the day. And so, the way it's structured now is that we have, from five to seven, we'll have all the young kids, middle school, high school, and we have two gyms in Anderson Hall that are donated by North Illinois University. So, in the other gym, we have all the younger kids, which the number is now totaled about 200. And so, in each gym, in the smaller gym, you probably have about 75 kids, and in the larger gym, there's probably 100 and some odd kids, because they're ranging from all ages. And so, we use high school students and some college students as basketball counselors to work with those students. This year, the number has increased to roughly 215 or so students. We had a number of students who were first grade and younger, kindergarten age. That population of kids is growing each year, and actually, the older kids are growing too, getting more juniors and seniors from high school to participate in the program. So, the program is growing on both ends. And with the basketball mentoring program, we use basketball to get them in, to organize drills and teams and games, we get them t-shirts, we put them on teams to play against each other. And during the course of the week, we'll have different community leaders come in to speak to the group, different campus organizations will come in. We just try to put them in front of any positive people we can, as many of them as we can. And I U police have a prominent presence at the basketball camp because there are a few of those guys who grew up through the camp, and so they come by to talk to the students and all the participants. And we sit them down and make them listen for a short period of time to different community leaders. So, this year, the program has grown. I just wanted to be known that it's been a great program for getting kids off the street in the summer, you know, with some things to do in the evening, keeping them involved and active, and getting them, tiring them out so that they go home and go to sleep. And so, that's been kind of the purpose of the program, is really to keep kids off the street, give them some positive activities to do. We've incorporated the young ladies, there are many more girls playing basketball now. We started out as just men, young boys, but we have almost as many young girls in the small, in the large gym as boys in that gym. So, it's not just for boys, and we also have a section, a seating section, because there are some people that just don't want to play basketball, but want to be in that environment. And so, as long as kids are cooperative and conduct themselves properly, we'll let them sit and watch. And so, that section is getting larger and larger and larger, and those students will be there when the different community folks come in to speak. And so, if we count those kids, I mean, we have even larger crowds. So, it's been a great program, it's been great to work with Derek Smith, who's the conductor of the program for all these years, and I want to see him continue the program and continually growing and getting people involved. I hope this has given some idea of what we do at the Basketball Mentoring Program for Nguzo Saba. You know, the agreement was I'd do this video and Derek present to the city council, but I got Deb for both of them, since he teaches a class on Monday evenings. So, any questions, any thing I need to add?
Jerry, it may have been covered at the outset, and I had difficulty hearing the fact. How long has Nguzo Saba been in existence?
We've been around since, we incorporated, I believe, in 96.
And that began with the summer, the summer program in 96?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Noriko.
What does Nguzo Saba mean?
It stands for the Seven Principles. It's a Kwanzaa term, so we use some of those seven principles when we teach the kids, you know, about collective work and responsibility, faith, and all that.
Alderman Baker.
This is kind of fun for me, because I think I started the council in 2001, and it was either then or the year before that the then Mayor Sparrow was asked for funding by your group. And what he explained to the council, because it wasn't in the budget, is that it would come out of the mayor's discretionary budget item, which was 14,000 at the time, which I think we ought to put it back in, because things can come up throughout the year, and the mayor has some money to be able to do whatever they want with, but I don't think we have that money item anymore. The next year, it came before the council when I started, and there wasn't a place for it, because it hadn't been there before, but we added it into the social services funding, which at that time was about 150,000, which I was told had been created when the city increased the sales tax from 6 and 1/4 to 6 and 1/2, and that was how they sold it to the community, is that they wanted to take a percentage of that 1/4% increase a long time ago for social services. I think we've reduced it a little bit since then, and when that happened, we encouraged your group to get 501(c) status, and for a couple of years there, we were encouraging them to go out to groups and look for funding, look for help, and lo and behold, a year, I don't know how many years ago, it must have been Derek, came forward and said that we have that status now, and I have to tell you that I never dreamed that you'd leverage it into what, in your proposal here, $12,000. I dipped into my pocket, pulled out a couple of checks from my companies, and wrote probably $50 each, and handed them to them, and said, this is the way you do it. Now, go out and tell everybody else I did it. And apparently, wow. I mean, $12,000. Hopefully, everybody up here can kind of take a lesson from that, in that something has grown that we always thought was an important volunteer organization for the community, and now you've got everyone owning into it, and keep it going. I'm impressed, and this is maybe, I don't know if you've ever done a presentation like this before, but this is over the top, but this is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Jerry, for the report. Appreciate it, and for the ongoing program. Moving on, we have public participation. Do we have individuals registered to speak? Anyone wishing to present the council? Okay. We will move on to consent agenda. We have before us a consent agenda consisting of six items. Approval of city council minutes. We have, item two is receive and file accounts payable and payroll through March 28th in the amount of $2,316,734.78. The investment bank balance summary through February 2016, and the year-to-date revenue expenditures for general fund through February 2016. We then have four resolutions. The first resolution, 2016-25, approving regulation of traffic on Illinois Route 38 for the purpose of holding a Memorial Day parade. Resolution 2016-26, approving the regulation of traffic on Illinois Route 38 for the purpose of holding an annual DeKalb Corn Festival. Resolution 2016-27, approving the final Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for Program Year 23, which runs April 1, 2016 through March 31, 2017. And the last resolution is 2016-28, approving DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study Budget for the Illinois Department of Transportation fiscal year 2017. I'd ask, are there any council members wishing to remove an item from consent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as we have it in front of us. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt. I'll ask for a roll call.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the items on consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Finuchin. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to items for separate action, we have before us a request for proposal for the STEAM Learning Center. I'll turn to Assistant City Manager Patty Hoppinstock for this item.
Good evening, everyone. Last city council meeting at the committee of the whole, we discussed the concept of the STEAM Learning Center, and in summary, the city has been exploring potential strategies for a one-of-a-kind collaboration to provide DeKalb with a community learning center. The Learning Center collaboration will provide hands-on, interactive experiences that explore science, technology, engineering, art, and math, better known as STEAM, as well as the history of the DeKalb community. A state-of-the-art learning center is envisioned that will attract a wide cross-section of the population and will be a destination designed to bring visitors to DeKalb. The next step in concept development for the STEAM Learning Center is to rely on the expertise of a consultant to analyze the feasibility of this vision. A request for proposal, or RFP, has been collaboratively developed to solicit a qualified consultant. The consultant's expertise is required to explore the potential for the learning center, what resources and support would be needed for success, and what ownership and operating models would be best suited for the learning center now and into the future. The consultant would make recommendations regarding the steps that would lead to the learning center's creation. As I mentioned at our last meeting, several critical community planning documents have outlined the need for this concept. July 2013, the city council adopted an updated city center plan with the vision of DeKalb City Center will be a regional destination for cultural learning, dining, and entertainment, joined with a world-class university and surrounded by well-connected, desirable neighborhoods. In addition, as I mentioned, in February 2016, the city council adopted the DeKalb 2025 Plan. The STEAM Learning Center will fulfill the community's need as identified in the plan's vision of a sense of place and a vision of community vitality in a vibrant downtown. And additionally, Proudy DeKalb, Inc. outlined a smart space learning center in its America's Best Communities grant application as one of its cornerstone projects for community revitalization. So, again, the groundwork has been laid through these various initiatives and documents from the past that set a nice segue into realizing the concept and the vision of a STEAM Learning Center. So, as the next step, the RFP would require a detailed study to provide the guidelines or guidance for feasibility, design, the cost and financial impact, construction and operations for the learning center, and the study would define the market area and community needs, analyze current and projected demographics, competition, and forecast the usage. So, what is the viability of a STEAM Learning Center in our community? It would determine potential financial impact, as I mentioned, ownership, partnerships, and management options, and provide planning parameters such as the total land size needed, the best location, and the types and sizes of space within the center that would be required for the various initiatives and visions. So, included in the RFP are sections that describe the selection process, conditions of proposal submittal, a project timeline, and a project scope. The project scope includes several key areas within the RFP, the first being the market review, and the second being operating resources and management. Recommended potential sites in area evaluation is another section of the RFP. Implementation plan, financial education and cultural impact, ownership, partnership, and management, potential for corporate sponsorships, and then a final conclusion and recommendations where the consultant would provide a detailed summary of all were completed, conclusions made, and how they were achieved. So, a draft report would need to be completed and sent to city staff by Friday, October 14th to be evaluated for changes. The final report would need to be completed no later than Friday, November 11th. The consultant would attend the DeKalb City Council meeting on Monday, December 12th of 2016 to present an overview of the feasibility study and to answer any questions that council and the public may have. The recommended consultant contract, so if you grant us the opportunity to release a request for proposal... a request for proposal, the planning team would then come back to the June 13th, 2016 city council meeting and with a recommendation for a consultant to engage in the work for the feasibility study. The project would be included in the draft FY 16.5 budget with costs to be incurred during that six-month timeframe. So that is the timeline. I do have members of the project team that are here, and we'd be more than willing to answer any questions specific to the RFP and next steps.
Alderman Noriko.
Do you have any idea how many potential, how many firms potentially would be interested in responding to the RFP?
Actually, the Center for K through P 20, the P, wait, K through P 20 Center, excuse me, does have a list that they have shared of consultants who would be interested in that. Patty, do you want to address that any more specifically?
Patty, could you come to the microphone, please?
I mean, I'm not, I don't need an exact number, but I wanted, you know, approximately...
So roughly.
I sent the list several weeks ago, so I don't remember exactly, but there were somewhere between eight and 12 firms that do this sort of work that I thought were appropriate to include on the list.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion to state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Patty Severt.
Do we need action from council at this point or just direction?
I think we'd request a motion at this point.
Okay. Here's our motion to approve the request for proposal for the STEAM Learning Center. Moved by Alderman Fanouken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Further discussion? We heard the timeline Patty outlined for us of results coming back to us on this matter. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, Patty. Resolution 2016-29, authorizing the execution of two side letter agreements with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 115 relating to vacation time and promotions. Let me turn to Assistant City Manager Patty Happenstaff for this resolution.
So before you is authorizing the execution of two side letter agreements with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 115 relating to vacation time and promotion. So the first item is a interim solution to address the new hires who are coming to us with the current contract language, which does not provide the opportunity for the appropriate time off for the type of high-stress police work that they do on a day-to-day basis. We are fortunate to be recruiting some fantastic candidates that come to us with vast experience in the police force from other communities that already have the academy and the academy completed, which is a cost savings to the city. So in order to address the concern that was brought forth to the city by the FOP for their new hires and to be able to continue to attract experienced candidates, we are asking for consideration for a interim solution to allow on a prorated basis for a new hire candidate to receive vacation time in lieu of holiday for that first year of service until the current language then would make them eligible to receive vacation effective that following January from date of hire. We are going to begin active negotiations through the collective bargaining agreement for the collective bargaining agreement, and the union has agreed that this will be an item that will be permanently addressed through that collective bargaining process. And again, the city wants to recognize the ability to maintain competitive in the recruitment process for qualified and experienced candidates, and we feel that this will be a solution to that, a temporary solution until otherwise negotiated. This agreement would expire until the new language is written within the collective bargaining agreement. And this is a cost neutral for the city of Decalb, so we feel that this is a good way to resolve a short-term problem. The second is a side letter which allows the city to enter into agreement of the elimination of the corporal position and by promoting the current corporals to sergeants. We're not increasing the number of supervisors. We're just taking a corporal rank and promoting the corporals to sergeants, allowing us to have the adequate amount of supervision that is required to appropriately respond to critical incidents. And it allows us to have a across-the-board process for selection and promotion through the Board of Fire and Police Commission approved upon selection and promotion process. So that is a gain or a positive change for the city to have that all promotions then going forward be vetted through the Board of Fire and Police Commission. As an exchange for that, the city would be able to permanently eliminate the shift preparation time and would be incurring a cost savings even with the promotion of the corporals to sergeants with the elimination of shift preparation time, which the police chief has found is something that is being addressed and the supervisors are being briefed in a more productive and cost-effective fashion.
Thank you, Patty. I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2016-29. Is there a motion? Moved by Alderman Marquardt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Baker. Discussion? Are there questions of Patty at this point? I'll ask for a roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. I'd like to thank the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 115 and the city staff that have been involved in arriving at these side letters, so thank you for that effort.
Mayor and council, I'd like to add that the Fraternal Order of Police Union and the city staff have really engaged in collaborative discussions, and they have been very productive, so I'm very pleased with the partnership with, between both parties.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution 2016-30, approving the regulation of traffic on Illinois Route 38 between First Street and Fourth Street on Saturday, May 7, 2016, from 1:30 to 4:30 PM for the purpose of holding the second annual Artigra Parade. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make it amended to have the parade located on Locust at the same date and time, please.
So, Bill, your motion would be eliminating the Route 38 portion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Baker. Discussion. Let me turn to Ellen DeVita.
Hi, everyone. I am a member of the Artigra Organizing Committee representing this city. This is the second year that the event has happened, and it's part of the city's overall strategic plan and an effort to bring more arts and culture into the community and build downtown events. This year, the group is expanding the event to two days, and on the Friday night prior to the parade, which would be May 6, the March to Bourbon Street will be held at the Egyptian Theater presented by Dance Encounters, which is also on State Street in the Fargo Theater. And the reason this was pulled off the consent agenda is because not every one of the merchants downtown is comfortable with the parade closures, and I get it. Not every parade, not every event, not every downtown festival benefits all businesses. So it's a policy decision for the council to consider whenever you get requests of these. And as we begin to have more events downtown as our strategic plan desires, it'll be a harder and harder decision for the council. Some events are geared towards families, some are geared towards date night. There's different subsets of the community that will be attracted to each event, and it's a juggling act. On this particular event, not everybody was against the route. Tapaluna and Dance Encounters had approached me at the merchant meeting to articulate that they would like to see the parade on State Street, excuse me, on Lincoln Highway, Illinois Route 38, because of the visibility that it provides. We do have one of our merchants here, Kristy Carter of Carter's Cottage, and she represents a group that is not so happy with that route. I know that the Artigra Committee would move to Locust if so required, but in an effort to minimize the closure, I just want to point out that the parade route for this event is different than the others. The closure would be at 2:30 for staging, but unlike other parades, parking would be allowed on the street all day because it's a very minimal impact to the street. The portion that was on Lincoln Highway for the parade last year was 15 minutes. It was a very quick, and cars that were parked at the time that they had closed for the staging, they've got people staging on Third and vehicles sitting on Lincoln Highway. Any car that was parked was allowed to leave the blocked-off area. Overall, the closure would be about 45 minutes. So it's, again, it's a council's policy decision. There's a division in opinion in the business community on whether or not this actual parade should happen on Lincoln Highway. I can answer any other questions you might have.
Other questions? Alderman Noriko.
What are the advantages and disadvantages of relocating to Locust?
There's less visibility. The Artigra presenters have reached out to the downtown merchant community. They came to the last two downtown merchant meetings held at Ferandas, and they've asked the businesses if they would think of ways to integrate into the event, to maybe host a local artist, to have artist displays in their businesses, maybe live windows on the Friday night prior to the event or during the parade. They're looking for ways to bring art into the community more often. So in direct answer to your question, the disadvantage is Locust has less visibility along, there's less businesses on Locust than there are on Lincoln Highway.
Let me ask, Alderman Fanouken, do you have advantages having proposed Locust Street?
Well, we do, because we won't close down Lincoln Highway at all. I think we do have a merchant here who would like to speak to the disadvantages. I know her business in particular and a couple other businesses. I know the impact, the negative impact that has on their business over that timeframe because it's scheduled in the resolution for a three-hour closure, not the short time that Ellen has suggested. And actually, the suggestion for Locust Street comes from our economic development coordinator as it is. Ellen suggested that at a merchants meeting a couple of months ago. So that's where part of the problem comes in, is just negative impact. You know, we have the parade on Memorial Day. That doesn't impact them because it's at 9 o'clock in the morning on a holiday. The Corn Fest obviously closes it for the whole time. The other parade that will happen at some point during the year is Kish Fest Parade, and that's later on a Friday night, so that doesn't impact them the way this parade does. So that's the advantages of having it on Locust compared to having it on Lincoln Highway during what really is the prime time of their business on a Saturday.
If I may, mayor, the subject line is in error. The summary paragraph is the correct one. The 1:30 to 4:30 was last year's subject line, and the actual application in your packet from Artigra does have the shortened timeframe. I apologize for that.
So your motion, Bill, is amending the resolution before us to locate the parade on Locust Street?
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to adjust that time?
Definitely.
2:30 to 4:30?
The timeframe, we can definitely adjust that and have that close for a less period of time without...
Okay. And are you willing to adjust the second? Who seconded that?
Dave Baker.
Baker?
Whatever Bill wants.
Okay.
For clarification, mayor, I think if this was relocated to Locust, we wouldn't need to apply for road closure permission from IDOT, so we would view this as rewording the resolution to direct that it be held on Locust instead of applying to IDOT for permission for road closure.
If that's how we need to word it, Dean, please make it the correct form. Yes.
Well, you'll deal with the wording in the motion, Dean. The resolution we have before us doesn't talk about the approving agency. It just says approving the regulation of traffic. And the intent of the motion is approving regulation of traffic on Locust Street from 2:30 to 4:30 on the stated date. Other discussion?
I'd like to hear from anybody. My phone has come out.
Public comment? Business owner? Bill, you referred...
If I may, Kristy, please come up to the podium.
I hand out. Yep. Thank you.
I have it on...
Can I get one, please? Sure. Okay, all right, I'll share.
Hi, my name is Kristy Carter. I own Carter's Cottage Interiors to and on used Lincoln Highway in Decalb. So the paper I handed out has two charts on it. The top chart just shows on the 4/25 date the sales for three different businesses that are located directly on 38. And you can see that from one Saturday to the following Saturday, a significant decline in our sales. Then also on the 9th, you see an upward swing in our sales on these three individual businesses. So you can see whenever those roads are closed, how it negatively impacts business by, on an average of an 80% loss for that Saturday in sales. The bottom diagram indicates the transactions throughout 2015, and you can see that our peak time for customer transactions or customer sales is exactly 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And it starts to decline about 3:30, 4 o'clock. So 1 o'clock is our utmost peak time, and any time that the roads are closed, they're posted, generally posted, depending on the event and depending on the time of the event, at 12:30, 1 o'clock. And that just further is a negative detriment to how we succeed in business on 38. So I do appreciate even the consideration, but as you can see throughout the year, any event that's held on a Saturday during these timeframes, how it negatively impacts the businesses that are on 38.
Questions of Kristy? Thank you, Kristy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ellen, have the parade organizers been apprised of the potential location of the parade route?
Yeah, I knew, I let them know that there had been some dissent and not total agreement on it, and that's when, you know, I was advised that if they had to move it to Locust, of course, they would do so. I will tell you, I did not confirm with them whether they would be here this evening, and I apologize for that.
Okay. Further discussion? Are you prepared for the question, then? I'll assume so. I'll ask for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
And for clarification, this would be on Alderman Fanouken's motion to amend the resolution? So if this motion passed...
Well, I didn't have a motion on the floor, Dean. He made an amended motion. Or me...
And I seconded it.
Pardon?
And I seconded it.
And I seconded that motion. So, we have to run that motion first.
Your motion, Bill, was worded with Locust Street, correct?
Correct.
So, the original motion, then, we want to be clear on the record. The original motion, then, was a motion to approve the resolution with an amendment to Locust Street in lieu of Lincoln Highway.
Right, instead of Route 38.
And adjusting the time to 2:30, 2:30 to 4:30.
So, we're not voting on the amendment, we're just voting on the new...
The original amendment includes Locust, not 38 now. This is the main motion.
So, before us is the main motion to locate the parade on Locust Street from 2:30 to 4:30.
Is that clear, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I needed that clarification, too.
Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution 2016-31, authorizing an agreement with the state of Illinois not to exceed the amount of $240,000 for the purpose of a cooperative purchase of 3,500 tons of road salt for the 2016-17 snow season. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Alderman Fanoukun. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Alderman Favor seconded discussion. Turn to Public Works Director Holdenman.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, Public Works Department is requesting the council approval for the mayor to enter into an agreement with the state of Illinois Joint Purchasing Program for the purchase of 3,500 tons of road salt for the 2016-2017 season. This is a program where municipalities within the state join together to maximize their purchasing power and through the state joint purchasing program, get the best possible price for rock salt, I'm sorry, road salt. The current price that we pay right now was set by a bid from last year. It's $67.39 per ton. In our, in the program, we have two options. One option is to renew at that price of 67.39 or the second option is to enter into a new bid for this year. Street Superintendent Espy monitors different factors throughout the year and then he makes the recommendation. This year, we're recommending to go with the solicitation of the bids because we believe there's a surplus of salt based on the fact that it was a relatively mild winter last year and a relatively low cost of fuel. And so, we're recommending that we jump in to the market, so to speak, and try to get a better price than the 67.39. The resolution before you is for not to exceed amount of $240,000. We believe that the 3,500 tons of salt will get us through next winter and that this amount will be sufficient based on history of prices. Any questions?
Questions of Mr. Holdenman. Alderman Noriko.
Do we have much salt left over from this winter season?
The dome is currently full to capacity. Per the contract, we are required to buy 80% of the contract, which we have fulfilled that obligation, and then we've got a full dome going to next season.
So, in other words, so for the upcoming, for 2016, 2017 winter, potentially, we'll have to buy less salt?
We contract 3,500 tons every year.
Oh, okay. So, you're, we're always obligated to buy a certain amount?
Correct.
80%.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't have to take delivery on that, right? Don't they have a place to store it?
Yeah, if you don't take your 80% of the contract, you can store it on their site, but their fee is so high that it almost negates the cost of the savings. Back, I don't know, it was about six years ago, we looked into that and it was, you know, I think the price we're paying was like $52 a ton to purchase it. To store it, it was like $47 a ton.
But there are other agencies such as down by the tollway where they have told me, and I think I might have passed it on to you, where they would share storage if we ever needed it.
Yep, I've discussed it with them.
I don't think we're going to be in trouble to follow what staff wants to do. They'll find a place to put it.
Other discussion questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, but...
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-8, publishing the official zoning map of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And this is to receive and file on first reading. Been moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanoukun. I'll turn to Derek Island.
Thank you, Mayor. As we do every year, complying with state statute, we have before you tonight the zoning map for the city of DeKalb, the 2016 version. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request at their March 16 meeting and forwarded a recommendation for adoption and approval. So, every year what the zoning map does is it entails all the zoning changes that has occurred since we met last year on this. So, what you'll see in this year's zoning map differently than last, some highlights that were included in the staff report. The University Village was rezoned to Plan Development Residential. Oak Crest Retirement Center was also rezoned to Plan Development Residential. The Fargo skating, the Fargo Skateboard Training Facility, pardon me, was zoned Central Business District. And then we did a zoning amendment for the Chipotle Restaurant to have the outdoor seating. So, those ordinances are now reflected in the city's official zoning map. That's also included in your backup. So, I'll gladly answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Derek? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to Communications, Alderman Fanoukun?
No report.
Alderman Marquart?
No report.
Alderman, Snow?
Yes, I just wanted to, first of all, remind residents that I believe spring landscaping pickup starts this April 1st and I wanted to remind people that can now put out landscaping for April 1st and beyond. Also, I've had a request that remind people that walking pets, to make sure you clean up after your pets. Take plastic bags with you. Your neighbors will appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Noriko.
I just wanted to thank the library for the wonderful Big Read lecture by the author, Julia Alvarez. She was truly inspiring, talking about the value of libraries and reading. Us English majors love to hear comments like that. And I've started reading the book and it's wonderful. So, congratulations and thank you.
Alderman Baker?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
I was just going to welcome our newest resident, Vivian Mayclack, arrived today at 12:10 p.m.
Congratulations, Grandpa. Okay. City manager?
No report.
City attorney?
Yes, Mayor. As the council knows, back in September of last year, the city council ultimately voted to approve the University Village rezoning ordinance after several months of public hearings and a very extensive process. At that time, a lawsuit was filed that challenged the vote of the city council with respect to that rezoning ordinance. And in October, that lawsuit was voluntarily dismissed by the plaintiffs that had filed it rather than arguing the city's motion to dismiss their claims. At that time, the explanation provided by those parties was that they simply wanted an explanation of the city's legal authority supporting the legitimacy of the vote. And that explanation was provided both in a detailed motion that was filed in court prompting their voluntary dismissal and also in a press release and public statement that was provided thereafter. In the months since then, some have attempted to perpetuate a debate over the underlying votes through comments at public meetings and elsewhere and most recently through a paid advertisement in the newspaper. That advertisement requested a second response to the same set of questions regarding the University Village rezoning. A detailed response has been prepared and will be sent to the party responsible for the advertisement and a copy also provided to the council this evening. The response discusses the current state of the law regarding the council's vote, inclusive of issues such as the simple fact that a three-to-three vote is a tie. Repeating arguments to the contrary does not make those arguments correct. It's important to note that the response also briefly touches upon a case arising out of the city of Crystal Lake, also a home rule authority, and the interpretation of their municipal code and its impact upon their voting. This is a case that was decided by the Second District Appellate Court in December of last year. The Second District is also the appellate court that would hear cases arising out of the city of DeKalb. That cases of import to this city council, as the city of Crystal Lake city code includes provisions that are nearly identical to DeKalb city code, and the holdings of the case potentially have an impact on the number of votes required for the city council to take certain actions. The holding in that case, in fact, takes a far more liberal view of the minimum vote requirements for final passage of an ordinance, in that case, upholding a vote by three members of a seven-person city council to pass the final tax levy ordinance for the city of Crystal Lake for 2013. At an upcoming meeting, we will present the background on that case and also the policy questions that it raises so that this council can establish its direction as to how it wishes for the city code to work and what requirements it wishes to have applicable as minimum voting requirements based on the ruling in that case. Because again, based on the ruling in that case, which is a far more liberal approach than the city has taken in the past, the home rule status of the city gives it the ability to have some influence over those questions prospectively. Ultimately, it's the city council that establishes policy for the city staff to follow and implement and we will continue to work to see that the decisions of this council are informed at the outset and seen to conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Mayor?
Yes. Alderman Baker?
I'm not going to pretend that I know for sure when we should be having at least six out of the eight, but I can tell you for sure when Donna Johnson was the city clerk, if it was an important vote, and I'm not sure what the definition of that would be other than maybe it required the corporate authority, six out of eight. Me as Alderman, and this hasn't happened since Donna retired, but she would call to make sure that enough people were going to be present so that, and that there would be six yeses of those present or at least a chance for that, or we would just postpone the vote. So, I, I mean, and yes, I've been present when many three threes were broken by the mayor voting, but I see clarification for the future as well.
Thank you.
And I think that's an excellent point. I think the council should clearly understand the voting requirements. The Crystal Lake case that just came out a couple of months ago has a definite impact upon that and we've wanted to follow that and make sure it was not going to be further appealed, but we are now at a point where that conversation is appropriate. And hopefully, any questions regarding previous actions of the council? And again, the result of a three-three vote being a tie, hopefully, those are now resolved.
Thank you. City clerk Johnson?
No report.
Assistant city manager?
No report.
Chief...
No report.
Kathy Haley. Chief Hicks.
No report.
Director DeVita?
I just wanted to advise the council of another arts-related event that's going to happen. I met this morning with representatives from our Convention and Visitors Bureau, the DeKalb Area Arts Council and NIU. They're working on creating a Saturday series art walks, with the first one being in October. They're going to start with three times a year. It will be more than visual art. They'll encompass theater, music, all sorts of art, culinary, and it'll be a really fun event. They're looking to create these on a Saturday with noon to 5:00 timeframe events for families and then more adult-oriented events in the evening. So, look, stay tuned.
Thank you. Director Holdenman?
I just wanted to remind our residents that the Health Department is sponsoring a CRT TV Collection Day on Saturday, April 2, at their 2550 North Annie Glidden Road at the County Health Department. It's on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to noon.
Thank you for that. I would like to clarify for council and for the record, at the outset of tonight's meeting, a public statement was made by Mr. Hajishi referring to a College Town Partner document. The document that he offered as the example is titled Purpose Document. It is not an operating statement or a development document for that development. The emails that were referred to in Mr. Hajishi's comments this evening were referring to third-party emails. He indicated that those were third-party emails. I was not party of being copied on those emails or participating in those. I would just like to reiterate that the involvement, my involvement in the College Town Partners was in a conversational mode of a potential development that was being discussed within the community among private parties. And that was the extent of my participation in that development. It was through conversations. Anything further this evening for the record? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman. Favor? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry.